All right, I call this meeting to order. Let's see, April twenty third, two thousand twenty five. And at what? Twelve old. Call for order changes or additions to the agenda.
I think that.
Yeah, Chair, I'd like to add items for discussion. Excuse me, I'm sorry, under business, just for discussion. Just add public information with plus policy and help this.
And I'd like to add discussion of a executive session with staff for next meeting.
With staff, staff.
Yes.
Librarians or us, or what's what's considered?
I would say an employee. That's what I mean, with a library employee.
For next.
I don't think we can legally do it now.
Okay.
I think we have to advertise an executive session.
Yeah.
And I would like to make a change to the agenda. I would like to delete. Under unfinished business. Motion.
The director's souls. Yeah, we, or we don't want to vote on it.
Exactly.
I might.
Just remove the action?
Yes.
Okay.
If you want, yeah, we, we do that, that's fine, just like that.
Just discuss it.
Okay. Right.
All right, well, can we clarify that, please, are we just removing the action, or are we moving the entire? What is the request?
Well, their request is the fact that the goals are set by the library board trustees, but these are excellent goals for.
So are we discussing it during this meeting?
Do you want to discuss?
Yes.
Okay, no action, right?
No action.
Okay. All right. Any others? Good. Public comment items on the agenda, are there any? Am I loud enough today?
Okay. Um, people are commenting that they can't really hear what's going on.
From where?
On, on Zoom, yeah, so would you like to use that so they can hear?
Not.
I was, I was like, this is, that's not.
Do I?
Yeah.
I'm gonna push up. Or push down.
All right, public comment items on the agenda. Are there any? Okay, we're moving on to number three. Consent agenda, now we've prob, you've probably looked at your meeting minutes from March and your financials. Are, we can look for minute, or we will vote. A consent agreement, if you have any questions, so.
The charge for. That was to Sammy, would you like to explain?
That was my trip to MLA. So that was just my hotel room, and then I only turned in. Mileage for a one-way trip there, because that was more than sufficient to cover my cost, I didn't even do round trip.
So when I asked, what I asked you, was any?
You didn't ask about where I was staying, though, or how I was getting there, you only asked how Emily, how she was getting there and where she was staying.
Guess we didn't.
Yeah, you guys didn't, didn't care where I was staying or how I was getting there.
But over five hundred, we have to.
We have to.
Bring it to the board. But you probably didn't know that when you went, right?
Right, but animal good.
I think we had a discussion of who would attend back during the budgeting in June.
No, because if we did that, we wouldn't have talked about Big Sandy, we would have to pay their own way.
I don't remember Big Sandy paying their own way. Would you like, okay, should we? Maybe we need to discuss this next meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, that good? Oh, let's see where we have. Are there any other questions on the financials or the minutes? Hey, may I have a motion to accept the meeting minutes from March and the financials together?
I move to accept the meeting minutes and financial reports as are given.
In a second?
A second.
Okay, and we have public comment on that, is there any for those two? Right, we can vote on these, all in favor accepting. The minute me, meeting minutes from March and the financial report, say aye, please. Okay.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, opposed? Okay, motion is carried. Branch reports. Darlene, are you there? Sarah, are you there?
I'm here, Darlene doesn't have a voice today.
Okay, Sarah, you want to give your report?
Sure. Can you hear me okay?
A little quiet, please.
How about now, is that better?
Yes.
Okay. So for March, our spice of the month was margarite. Spring was in the air with our crafts that we chose for the youth, we celebrated Step Into Literacy and Made Read Across America. We displayed green books for Saint Patrick's Day, and some of our make and takes included leprechauns and celebrating International Waffle Day.
Thank you very much. For Benton.
In March, Fort Benton had things for displays for Women's History Month, Death and Disability Awareness Month, Women of Myth, Saint Patrick's Day, Construction Vehicles Spring, and Read Across America. Um, projects, the flooring was installed in the McLeish room, um, and cleaning up and organizing the craft corner. We have the spring book sale, March twentieth and twenty first, with over a hundred and sixty dollars raised for Fort Benton Summer Reading, and Sammy, Jo, and I attended MLA. We were going to talk more about that during, well, I was going to talk more about it during director report than.
There you go.
So Geraldine report, or, okay, so the Geraldine, we, our themes were Saint Patrick's Day, Women's History, and New Books. And then we are still working on Completing Democracy Project, we're getting towards the finish line with that. And then I did attend MLA, yep.
You want to talk, tell us a little bit about your experience?
Um, it was busy, I attended thirteen different classes and discussions, and just tried to absorb as much as I could. I have additional meeting notes, if you would like me to individually send those to you, it's about twenty pages, so. I wouldn't like to necessarily go through all of that, but if you would individually like to see what I went to, I do have that all written down for you.
Did you find it more useful than online?
Yeah, it was very nice to be able to bounce ideas off of other people right there, and you just have more of an opening for discussion on common struggles and things that are going on with other librarians and directors. So, yeah, that was really nice.
To see the highlights, if you would just move the whole.
I am more than willing to share that document with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I would, no change. I haven't heard anything. Okay.
Do we have people for? So I sent out my notes, brief notes, I also have about a page per. A page per presentation that I went to, but I tried to do the highlights that I sent out, and I don't think I need to read them aloud to everyone. But I included some links that you could look at, I did want to talk about the keynote luncheon. Um, the lady talked about the trustee project, and I sent that link, and she didn't have much trustee response from, like, the Western United States, but she wanted everyone to share that out with their trustees, it's. And a less than fifteen-minute survey, um, to talk about your experiences. Um, yeah, and then the other highlight was getting to present Bethany with the award at the awards center. Which was really lovely, and it's nice to see about everybody else across the state and all the things that are happening. Um, and then inventory update, we, Sammy, Jo, and Mary and I went up to Big Sandy. Help with inventory, we were able to get it, mostly done, everything that was there, done in one day. And then we are planning on, Mary and I will come to Geraldine on May eighth. To do the Geraldine branch, and then we haven't set dates for the Fort Benton one yet, but we would like to have it done before summer reading starts, which is. June eleventh, so while we don't have the exact date, that's the plan, to have it done before that. Um, and then in your packet. Um, I got this mailer addressed to the Board of Trustees, the copies were already made, the color copies, so I just included them, there was no note, so I don't have any. Um, information about that.
Was it fifteen minutes?
Uh, I do have a question about inventory, for Benton, have everybody get together for that, like you did in the big standing?
Um.
Trying to repeat that.
Yeah, um, I don't think so, because we only have so many.
Scanners.
Scanners, sure, and so, and most likely, some of it will be done on the weekend anyway, so, I mean. Just kidding. We can offer that up, but.
Yeah.
I'm not sure, yeah, thank you.
And inventory is basically going through and checking if the books are supposed to have it there.
Does anybody have any other questions about anything during? The trustees.
What was the tone of Emily this year?
Um.
Kind of normal, or?
Well, subdued, but hopeful.
Okay.
Yeah.
Nice, similar, um, classes and presentations to the last years.
It was, yeah, and I think it depends on where you are in your career.
Okay.
Um, also, I felt this year, I think, was most beneficial for me, because I wasn't as overwhelmed, when you're new, there's just like so many things, and you're trying to take it all in. And that can be hard, versus, like, I went to a few to look at, um. Expanding services into highways, I went to the lockers, I went to the bookmobile, and strategic planning. One, um, community outreach, things like that, so it was more, I was able to kind of more focus based on. Things the trustees have said before, so.
Oh, nice, yeah.
All right, any other questions? Any? Public comment? Okay. All right, moving on to announcements, Pathfinder is five-one from nine to three, and I think Jess said she's going, and I think I'll be going too.
Yeah, I would encourage all, if, if we could have a quorum at that, just to have, at least at the continuing education, so we could finish out our continuing education for the year, that. That three hours.
Yeah. From one until three.
And.
I think I should be able to go, well, there's, oh, yeah, I should be able to go. But there is a school registration, but no.
Well. I think it's. Is the, is the education in the afternoon, I believe so, okay.
It says one to three.
Yes.
Corey says continuing it is from one to three.
Okay, so the morning part's optional for trustees?
Well, there has to be one.
I'll be there for that, though, so, I, I'm trying to say to go to the afternoon.
So that would be good, okay, thank you. So that's much more.
We're gonna be there.
Yeah. I'll be there for sure.
Yeah.
Corey also said Chris Goss is presenting on label issues in law for libraries.
Yeah.
Five twenty-six, all branches of show kind of library system will be closed for Memorial Day. And then, um, summer hours, do you want to talk about that, Emily, because it's.
Yeah, so, in the winter, we're open Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, nine to seven, and then Thursday, Friday, nine to five. But in the summer, just Monday, Tuesday, um, nine to seven, so it's taking the five to seven off Wednesday. If the board wants. I would like to ask the board if you approve that change.
Corey also said if you have a quorum, just note it publicly.
Christine, you're changing just Wednesday tonight. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, makes sense.
Right, we need to make a motion, could I have a motion to change the summer hours for the Fort Benton Library?
I will make a motion to change the summer hours for the Fort Benton Library.
Second? Hey, is there discussion? Okay, public comment, please. All right, we will vote on this thing, all in favor of, if some summer hour schedule for Fort Benton Library, please say aye.
Aye.
Most? I think motion, motion is carried. Unfinished business, policy review, objectives. Um, if it's all right, let's review. If it's all right, I would like to move that back again, Emily, to the, to the committee. I read it again, and I'd like to move it again, so do we have to? Make a motion on that? Or, let's see.
I think you can introduce a motion, but the rest of us don't necessarily have to vote for it.
Um, okay, I would like to introduce a motion to send a objectives, a policy back to the committee. Is there discussion?
You can make, you can make a motion, you use second.
I'll second.
Okay.
Sorry.
Sorry, question, um. The, I don't think anything wrong with this policy, to me, it would make sense to pass it if they are a policy calendar. Is there something?
I, I worked with, you know, we emailed each other, and since I wasn't there, and have not seen this, I did not like number four. So I thought it was, we were trying to keep it simpler, so it says, just like materials that would achieve a balance between the material and the contemporary, because. While creating a collection of permanent value into acquiring materials, that will reflect the different points of view. It's more like the word salad.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Public comment?
Sissy asked, what is the policy that they are referring to?
Objectives.
It's online.
Yeah. All right. If there's real, let's see. All right, all in favor of sending the. Yeah, was it objectives back to the committee, say aye, please?
Aye.
Now it votes? Okay. All right, moving on to functions, Emily and I thought that functions could just go away. Because we, well, we've, I've been reading, and we don't have to have every policy in the whole world, and functions were very, what do we say, it's, it's very. It's kind of just block.
That's the function of the library, or, tonight, now.
It should be.
They are all.
It was very small, and it was just like, yeah. And, and I was reading where we don't have to have all the policies.
Yeah, well, the policy service, I would, yes.
So.
But it is, we could just eliminate it, since it's surgical purpose.
Surgical purpose, yeah.
Emily, do you want to comment on that?
All right, fine.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just a little. You can read it if you'd like.
Okay, so as everyone who's listening knows, it's one sentence, it just says, the libraries in Choto County work together to provide a complete public library system to serve the people of Choto County. Makes sense.
And that's probably included in some of the other. Policies, so.
That makes sense.
Okay.
Good decision, though.
Well. Yeah, so, um, is there a motion? Hmm, motion to get rid of the functions policy?
I will make a motion to remove the functions policy.
I think. Well, let's look into it. Hey, is there the more discussion? Public comment? All right, we will vote, all in favor of, of removing the functions policy from the group, say aye, please?
Aye.
Most? Okay.
Can I take us a little timeout? So I, um, printed these to go in your policy binders. Oh, was this a news, I had a book out there, so everybody has it, and then I made copies of the ones that were. Um. Over there, well, then, then we only passed the vision, and so these would go in.
Thank you. You can get rid of them.
Thank you.
So there's the vision. The motion. And my thoughts, so.
He did.
Okay. Very soon, so, yeah, for minutes. Building a facilities discussion. You have.
Okay, we can just.
No, it's just a suggestion.
Oh, okay.
So.
They can't hear you on Zoom, if you could use the mic.
Yeah, I'm trying.
I was just letting you.
Um, so, no, so going through the, the policy calendar, and making sure we're doing good public transparency and, and communication, so to bring one on just to read. And have, and then they know that it's coming up, so then if someone wants to come to the next meeting to talk about it, um, they're able to do that, so currently. Uh, closing of facilities policy reads, all libraries will close for the eleven legal state holidays each year. When a holiday falls on a Sunday, when a holiday falls on Sunday, the following Monday is a holiday. When a holiday falls on Saturday, the holiday will be celebrated on the preceding Friday. The director librarian on duty or the chair of the board is authorized to close the library under unusual circumstances, that was last approved by the board October. Twenty-sixth of two thousand twenty-two, and was reviewed before that, September twenty-third of two thousand twenty.
All right, makes sense, so we'll. We'll, we'll, that's back to the policy committee then.
Yeah, this was a chance for anyone on the board, so, if they had any comments, to make votes.
Any comments?
Yeah.
Thanks. We are moving on to the strategic plan, which is in fashion items. So we need a motion first, right?
Yep.
And, yeah, could I have a motion? To adopt the strategic plan, and written in our packets, I think. Have a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to adopt the strategic plan.
A second? I'll say, can I do that?
Yep.
Yeah, all right. There, uh.
And then we can discuss.
Yes.
So, there's just one part. Under full, long-term without reaching county, um. I suggested that the surveys that we're going to get the highway go to the school as it serves as a community center, but it says school and community center. I'm wondering if you can just cross off and community center, because the senior center is really the community center, just to clarify that. I love this. It looks good.
Okay, any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any public comments? Public comment? All right, it's been moved in second, you know, where are we, where are we? The strategic plan has been moved in second to accept the strategic plan, you can have a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hey.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to see open trustee position. I think.
Yeah, I think everyone had a copy. Of the one, the, um, original, I think. Application at the tent, and then I did send you all individually a copy of. One that I thought we could look at as well. Um, I know there's only one, we have packets, I have examples.
Awesome.
Thank you. To consider.
Thank you, I didn't put this in yet, please. So how do, we have two applications.
I mean, the differences are pretty subtle, I was just trying to go in line with what. The commissioners letter asked that they all go to them, and trying to skip a step of making it sensible library, and then.
Well, their main point was to commit, but they didn't.
Right, and then, and then not, right, yes.
I really liked the one that, um, Jess went and said that, one of the reasons is because we did move with, with Steve Gannon. Uh, Kim was there, and myself, and so is, and when we talked with him, he said to re-bop anything that talks about relatives that also belong. Because at the time, they were objecting to. Um.
Janet, when did we meet with him?
Is this prior to Jessland getting on the board?
Yes.
Okay, maybe a year ago then?
Yes.
Okay.
Because Nola was on the board, and he, he said that it is very hard in a small community not to be related to someone. So, they, uh. It was the chairman, I believe, kidding, and we didn't want. Nola to be able to vote because of the, because of the letter that Michelle Van Other had sent, and he said that does not apply.
I don't remember it in those terms, I do remember meeting with him on what conflict of interest works for.
Right.
Works for, on how the conflict of interest would work in the library, and at what point you would recuse yourself, but I don't remember meeting with him specifically to prevent a member voting. I do not remember that, Janet.
Well, I have the old, you know.
Okay.
Oh, wow, so that was part of the reason, and I, I think the other one works fine for great policy libraries, but I feel that this many words added to us.
So you like? This one, or you like?
That one.
This one, okay.
We still. Any other discussion on, on two?
I also brought, hold on, like, the current examples too.
Oh, so.
A lot of them include, um, crusty job description.
You want to, you want to look at those, Emily, or not, or?
I did want to have one correction on the, if we're going to include Montana writing laws, that we would include. Um, Mont, Montana quote annotated two six, one zero six, one zero zero six, as that, um. Defines all of that, the rest of.
Can you just say those numbers?
Yes, two six. Two dash six dash one zero zero six. And add that to this app.
Yes, please, yeah.
Let's, let's take one zero six.
That's what it is.
One zero zero, we got it.
So we, we're just adding the.
Yeah, that I, I put it on the ones I.
Okay, so just so everyone knows, at the top of the application, it cites the MCA code number, but we'll add the actual text of the code. But you think, just the code, just that, okay.
Have it on, on a different one, so I added that.
That makes sense.
As also, as an example.
Oh, okay.
Okay, which is insane difference.
Got you. What is that referencing with both?
Yeah, I can show you that code.
I can look it up, too.
It's right here, I just have to print it off in case somebody.
There, Paul.
Mm-hmm, right.
It was, it was, right?
Oh, no.
And in my book.
I don't want to, I'm not trying to stare you down, I'm right here, my head thinking I probably know this.
You could look it up.
Thank you so much. Okay, but deals with the fact that we are a public entity and subject to public information requests. Okay, that makes sense.
The actual, all the language that describes it.
That's a good idea.
We do have a couple comments on Zoom, when you guys have a second.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So we are. So we are generally agree that this is a good application for this next round?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Can we, can we make a motion, please, to accept the second application?
I make the motion to set the second application with the addition of crossing out one kind of like to know laws and having that in the seal two dash plus dash one zero six.
One zero.
Zero six.
Yeah, I do.
Do you have a second, sorry?
I will second.
Hey, um, discussion now, please, there's a public comment.
Sissy would like the minutes that Janet said she has for the meeting with Steve Gannon, and then Whitney Bond Miller has asked if you could clarify where to find the county's library trustee application, please.
Well, there isn't an application available yet because it had to come to this meeting, but it will be available at the library and to be able to download and print off from online.
Okay.
As soon as I can get to that.
I also wondered if we could make it convenient for Highland citizens to put it in the school and in the senior center.
And then we're gonna have it at the courthouse?
I can send, yeah.
Okay, so any branch of the library, online at the library website and at the county courthouse.
Mm-hmm.
And there will be a charge for the time that it takes me to look up that, um, email from two years ago.
Or the minutes?
For Sissy.
For Sissy.
Yeah. Because, yes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, that's.
Well, yes.
Our public opinion versus the.
We're still.
But there's nothing.
Public opinion.
Right, it's been moved in second to accept second. Uh, board application on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hey, we're done. Good. Employee job descriptions, Emily, I don't know.
Um, so I did not print these off for everyone, um, but this is also available on the state library site, so okay, sample library job description, so I would like to ask the board to allow me to work with the staff to come up with job descriptions and to bring them back for approval. Um, probably, I don't know, one month is gonna be enough because our meeting is maybe gonna be a little bit early and maybe one week earlier, so by the June meeting, um, I mean, I could have them to the board, send them out so we can read through them, but to be able to discuss them and potentially approve them at the January, and then we can also put them in, so go to the policy committee.
You want them to be sent to the policy committee and then?
Sure.
Are they policy? Are they, because you talked about there's policy procedure. Let me see if it's on the lines. I guess I don't see it listed on the policies on the website, so maybe it's smarter procedure.
Would it be? Or do you some work?
Right here. Setting the goals for the library director, us on the library board of trustees, the board trustees is the governing body of the library. Their role includes setting the overall direction and policies for the library, as well as setting the goals for the library director and her employees. Therein place, the board of directors has a final approval for setting all the goals to be achieved within the library itself. The director is accountable to the board for an effective management and operation. Right, that's one.
But I believe in the past, we bypassed the committee and just discussed the job.
Think we've done the goals for a long time.
Okay, what about the job descriptions?
We have done all of that.
Okay, I think those we can discuss, like, discuss Emily's recommendations during a meeting.
Okay, we can, we don't, you know, the individuals' names.
Right, because it was a job position, it's not about people.
So we could bypass the committee because of, okay, I think we had that discussion with Cory. Okay, um, strategic planning, right? Good.
Is, um, and then along with that, I would like to, um, ask the board that we also have trustee job description written also under. Like trustee job description has not included people, but.
Is that something you, um, are willing to bring to ask, or would you feel more?
Like I said, I've got examples.
Okay.
They're in that book. Well, and what I found from other libraries.
Are we also allowed to bring examples?
I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, would you like us to email any ideas? Or wait until, are we gonna do all of it together? Or do you like to stretch it out?
So the trustee.
I just mean, are we gonna do the employee staff job descriptions and then trustee job descriptions all in one go? Your preference, Emily.
Discussion.
I would say, do you want it in the next?
That's what I think too.
Right, because I think the employees will take a lot longer.
Yeah.
Then.
Okay, so I wanna make sure I get my timeline right, so I will bring, um, send out and bring employee job descriptions to the June meeting, so it will be after, um, budget. We have to have our, you have to have your budget request to the commissioners before that, so it's not like that would be at that meeting, and then the trustee would be after that.
That makes sense, then we'd have the new trustee.
Trustee, I think that would be, I've been looking for that.
Yeah.
I agree.
So job descriptions for employees is in June. Okay, and then after that, we'll decide, right?
Yeah.
From us. Got it right on.
We need public, just and again, I mean, the state already has a number of descriptions available for both, and so it shouldn't be, I mean.
Uproat times.
Right.
Right.
Okay. And we don't, that's, that's just a special, right?
Yep.
Okay, any other discussion on that? That cover that? Okay. All right, moving on to director's goals. Um, Emily, I didn't like the set of goals. Um. I thought they were more global, which is great for you to have goals, but I want you to be discussing our rules that we gave you.
Which ones?
What with, that went with the evaluation.
If I remember right, one of the issues with the evaluation is many of the goals were tied in other staff.
I don't, oh, we have to, what do you mean, what do you mean, Kim?
Um, if I remember correctly, each of us had goals that Emily wasn't necessarily in control of. I think, like, if I remember right, there's one about Big Sandy taking control of the weeding process, which would be a goal for Big Sandy, not necessarily.
No, it would be a goal for the director.
Yeah, she's in charge.
She's in charge.
She's in charge.
So my understanding is a professional development goals, and I don't understand how that is.
Professional development.
We'll be a better for after.
Let me read this again, setting the goals for the library director rests on the library board of trustees. The board of trustees is the governing body, body of the library. Their role includes setting the overall direction and policies for the library, as well as setting the goal for the library director. The board of trustees has a final authority for setting all the goals to be achieved within the library itself. The director is accountable to the board for effective management and operation. And I think, I think they're wonderful goals, Emily, I'm not against any of them. It's just that the board also needs to set goals for how we want to work with them.
But I think Emily's point is, if you view this as coming naturally from the, um, yearly evaluation, most of the time with evaluations, they deal directly with the employee and how they can improve versus how the branch system needs to improve.
I disagree.
Okay.
I feel some of the goals need it to be an overall thing within the library sections.
Okay.
And, um, I would like to see in a couple months if she has, if you have done some of the goals. And, and I agree, your goals that you have are, are wonderful, they're over my head, because I can't even grasp some of the words, sorry. But, um, that's what I would like to see. Do you need another set of the goals?
Yes, it's like, I think.
No, I can have what I see. I, flat, do not understand. I just don't understand.
Um, so it sounds like, no, you are not willing to accept these as the director's goals.
Not, not to vote on.
No, no.
Well, I mean, how it works is we can introduce a motion, but it sounds like it would be voted down because we don't have a quorum.
Madam Chair, I, what I don't, the only thing that I saw with our director's goals is that we didn't put a timeframe on.
Yes.
Of having you come back in like three months to show us how you were achieving that, like you, uh, you did a great job, let's do what you're going to do, but I thought we should give you a timeframe. Most smart goals do have, well, all smart goals have that timeframe, instead of waiting until the very end of the year, um, like, three months from March, when we did accept these already, I thought it would be beneficial to revisit and have you give us a, a report, so you don't have to do it monthly, but that gives you time to meet some of those that you said.
So I know I only sent it out last night, um. So there are three goals, there are two, um, learning opportunities under each goal, so six tasks for the year. So I was thinking every other month I could present one of them.
So we could set that as your, as a goal, as a timeframe, then, every other month you would present. Um, and then show us how you're implementing that in your library. I mean, that makes sense to me, and that, to me, clarifies that it's a smart goal.
Okay.
So I think there's two of us that understand these goals as fitting in with the call it the yearly review, um, it sounds like there's two board members who don't see this as fitting in with your yearly review. So I would assume it's tabled until the next meeting. But it doesn't sound like we're in a point where we could make a motion that would pass to accept these.
To accept those.
Correct.
Or to just, to not, you know, one way or the other, yes.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what to do, I'm sorry.
Well, this was just discussion, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, if it's not something you originally feel like are gonna vote for, then, then the one.
Okay.
Because anyway, you took an office in action, Emily.
Well, but it was on the judge as an action item, so.
I know, but we took it off.
So, and then it's my understanding that when I receive the goal again, I'm not receiving your goals through, so I would like to see those as soon as you are able to find them, not today.
Oh, okay.
But.
Okay. And I have those goals.
All right. After I was what?
As my goals and you can.
I don't think I said that.
Yeah, I would be surprised if I have your goals.
Moving on, any other discussion? Okay, so that is tabled, director's goals are tabled, correct?
Thank you.
Okay. Um, amendment to the bylaws.
So I met with the commissioners on March thirty-first as directed. They do not want to see an amendment with a, a committee, they just want to see the applications. Um, he did not, Bob said he did not understand the need for a committee, and, um, after asking the hotline, the legal counsel, there'd be nothing, even if the board passed, I would not be legally binding within that. Um, I would like to ask for amendment to the bylaws since we updated our mission and vision statement. The vote is the next meeting if those can be put in place of the old mission and vision statement, is that a little changes them, so. That's my.
Could you say that again, please?
So you want to amend?
You want, we're not in there now, we voted on them, but you have.
Right, but I didn't, I, I guess I wasn't sure, I thought it would be in with an abundance of
Caution.
caution to make sure that the board has approved that they can be put into the bylaws.
Because it would change them by updating them.
I mean, if you don't want to, I guess.
Well, Madam Chair, actually, I, after listening to public class meeting about not having a committee as well as the commissioner's letter and knowing what Emily said, I would actually like to make a motion to amend the amendment, um, to the proposed of our bylaws from the March twenty twenty-five meeting. Just to simplify and clarify the whole process, I have an example of that amendment that I'd like to propose. Everybody, um, and the purpose of that is, um, to clarify what the, to be in line with what the commissioners are asking of us to have to have the applications go straight to um, the commissioners. And everything that is amended is underlined and in.
Want to take a minute, read it? If you like to.
Sure.
The position will be advertised through the media, including but not limited to the River Press and the library webpage. Perspective trustees will be invited to complete a written application, which shall be directly returned to the Shoto County Commissioners and copied to the library board chair. The board of trustees shall review each application and make a recommendation to the Shoto County Commissioners. Ideally, one member is appointed by the Shoto County Commissioners or reappointed each year before the end of the fiscal year, June thirty.
Thank you. All right.
I would like to make a motion to amend the motion, amend the amendment. I use the proposed policy amendment that you just received.
So just to be clear, we're voting to amend the amendment, we're not voting to just amend the trustee bylaws.
Well, the amendment that was put forth.
The last one.
Yeah, I'm amending that to the bylaws, so.
Okay.
Does that make sense? Like, there was already an amendment put forth, I'm amending that, because it was already towards the bylaws.
Okay, so we're still voting to add last, as last we use this.
No, we're taking that one from last meeting out.
Okay.
Through the committee, and it would just be what I.
So this will be added to just the bylaws.
Yes.
Without the previous amendment.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep, and it's to be in line with what the commissioners are asking of us.
Okay.
Hey, there is a motion made, is there a second?
My second.
Okay, discussion. Any discussion on this? Or we had enough?
Are you guys comfortable with it bypassing your committee?
Yes.
Okay.
Is it public comment?
Sissy asks, should you ask the commissioners their opinion?
I did talk to Bob Pasha on April third, um, in regards to this, and he did agree that the, um, committee was not necessary, but that we could vote in whatever we needed to change our bylaws to reflect what we thought was best for our bylaws. And that was a form of conversation on April third.
And they're all sort, if they sent. That we have in our.
The lawyer basically says they want all the applications, I guess.
Yes.
Yeah.
It does say that. And they were signed by all three commissioners.
Yeah, which just makes sense because it just says you have to return it directly to the Shoto County Commissioners.
Mm-hmm, just to simplify, so we don't have to have and give this to us every year.
Yeah. Well, I like it takes our staff out of the loop, it's not our staff's job to get it and take it, if you can't.
Makes it more simple for us.
If you want to be on the board, you have to be able to get it to the county commissioners.
Yeah. Any public comment? Hey, being a public comment, we will vote on this now, all in favor of remending the amendment? Say aye, please.
Okay.
Opposed? Yeah. So we're moving on to new business, correct? Um. You have some budget stuff for us?
Yep.
Okay.
So the order that I, they should be in your packet, that I tried, yep, I'm in your packet. Um, is.
Is it March two twenty?
Nope. Nope.
Oh.
Well, the top one should be. Um should say Fort Benton up in this corner. The first column is what the budget was this year. The second column is for projected expenses and then. The request, what would be requested and then the difference in that. One hundred is personal services. Which is wages. So there is a wage sheet. That looks like this, I calculated those numbers with a three percent cola. For for everyone. So we don't officially have the what they could be. The library trustee board is separate from. The county, like county commissioners decide for all other county employees, the board decides for library employees. So this was a, just a three percent. Cost of living. So that's that top one. Um so as you go through one hundred, one twenty, one forty one, one forty two and one forty three, those are all amounts. That are calculated by this sheet. So like the FICA. Is approximately two hundred dollars more, but I don't have control of that number. That's what comes out in that form. And as you can see on the rest of the. Line items are, I'm not asking for any increases on any of that. And if you go down. Owen stated and Pathfinder grant numbers are not included because we do not have that information at this time. And then if you look at the bottom of that page. Um under technical services, I've included the hotspots. So there are three T-Mobile devices that are located in Fort Benton. Because I've been told by Big Sandy staff that T-Mobile does not work in Big Sandy. Um so they they have Verizon, so the three T-Mobile are. In Fort Ben and then the five, we have five other Verizon devices, one is for. Um staff use only in Fort Benton, that's Carolyn takes it for to front range and to the buffs. Um and the county. Extension sometimes uses it if all the. Patreon hotspots are checked out. Big Sandy has two Verizon devices and then we have two for checkout, so you see that number there. The hotspot funding that we had been receiving from the state did not. Well, we weren't receiving the funding, the state was paying for the hotspots. The state is no longer paying for the hotspots. Since we don't have to buy devices, we already have the devices, there's no. Cost with that, but these two numbers are how much it would be to do unlimited data for each of those devices.
For a year.
Per year, so under technical services, we have that ten thousand dollars, we do not use all of that money. Or we have not, we did not come even close this year. So my recommendation is that we, and I talked to Cheryl about this yesterday, to make sure we could draw from that account from that line item. And she said that would be fine. So I'm not asking for more money, I'm explaining where the hotspot. How the hotspots will now be.
Could you clarify for me, I'm sorry, the the one thousand eighty is for all three devices?
All three devices, yeah. I'm gonna say that it's thirty dollars per month, per device, and then the horizon are forty dollars per month. Per device.
Okay.
And that's what we've been told, we can. Estimate what the cost will be, because again. Um it's my understanding that the state was able to negotiate those prices through those companies. And it's not guaranteed that those prices will still be available, but that's the most current information that I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, so then the next page is. Um Big Sandy. And there are. Besides the cola at the top and then their FICA is also. Effective, um no increases there except for if you look on travel and I will talk about that in a minute. That does not have a final amount yet, that is for discussion. And then looking at Geraldine. They must have done pretty well doing the. Personal services last year because I don't have to ask for any more this year, even with the rates. So I'm not sure how that worked out. Um we did add a fax line at the Geraldine Library and so that did add. Three hundred dollars for the whole overall year to make sure we have enough in that account. And then if you look at the sheet with. This sheet with the colors, this is for MLA. For twenty twenty six is in Great Falls, so I reached out to the staff to ask. What their interest level were, interest level is for that. So we'll just start at the top with mine, so MLA dues are sixty. Full registration is two hundred and fifty, the awards center is twenty. And I would plan on driving the county car and have offered to all staff that wants to meet in Fort Benton to do that. Um so my total cost would be approximately three hundred eighty. Marin dues sixty dollars, full registration is two fifty, but she has stated. She wants to wait and to see what's available and she may only want to attend one day, it just depends, so that could change. Um awards dinner, if she goes on Friday. Um she would prefer to drive, so her mileage reimbursement would be approximately a hundred, so her anticipated cost is four thirty. Um since it's close, um Carolyn would like to potentially. Go to one day, but she would ride along with me, so her cost would be two ten. Um Sammy Joe actually won an MLA membership. So she has no membership dues. For the next year, full registration would be two fifty. No lodging or meals and she has asked that mileage reimbursement coming at about one hundred dollars, so her total would be three fifty. Um Darlene just told me she wanted to go and I didn't get any more. Response from her about that, but Sarah did say that she would like to go to the full event. She would like to go to the awards dinner. Um meals, she put in for meals last time, so that would be ninety two dollars and then mileage reimbursement. From Big Sandy to Great Falls for four days would be four hundred forty five, so her total is. Um comes in at eight hundred sixty seven.
And why is the date?
Uh April. You're like eight to about twenty twenty six, I wanna say.
And I believe they're responsible for the trustees. We want the changes on themselves.
I don't know.
Is that what you're talking about? Federation, it's the federation that gets that. But that's for the entire federation.
Um so so looking at, so the current budgeted amount. Would cover the Fort Benton staff plus still have enough left over. Sometimes I'm not able to take the county car and so I have to drive my own vehicle like for sight visits or for meetings or for whatever. That's where that money comes out of, so it's a little bit over. And then so on, on Sammy Joe's, I increased by two fifty, hers was two fifty. Um I know that I have three fifty on here, but she also drives. For if we have all staff meetings, so I tried to include that reimbursement for that. For other travels, so. That is there, overall, I tried to keep it again to a pretty. Much as sum zero, I mean. So there's a bit more for wages, which then is a little bit more for FICA, but overall I tried to keep it about the same.
We're back on another sheet now.
Um no, it does.
And what was your, what was your thought on leaving the budget where it was?
I think it should work, I mean, I went through every. Every line item, I have a big spreadsheet where I track, I tracked down for six years worth of expenses and it should come in, the only one. Um that was. Low at this point is the telephone for um Geraldine. When we look at final numbers at the end of the year, the postage is gonna be. Off because of the.
An increase.
Well, no, because of.
Because we did a program. To Geraldine Alabama and Geraldine New Zealand.
I thought I was gonna be able to, not code it to a different thing, but I thought it was gonna be under um. We could put it under a different. Specifically for postage, Cheryl said it had to go under that, I mean, it's gonna be covered, we've got plenty of money to shift around. So I'm not worried about that, but just in general, that's why I didn't ask for more money in. Three eleven, was because it's not.
Again, yeah.
Yep, so but.
So what your thought is that this time, don't increase our county budget, is the thought that if materials go up. Other things are more expensive than.
Yeah.
Look at fundraising options or.
That when it comes, but I thought it was wiser to just try to keep it level at this point.
Okay.
So and this is not an action item at all right now, this is just. For you to take and look at, you can call me or email me, ask questions, I will be up, I'll be able to answer or. As well as I can or find out um.
With the travel, you didn't mention it's the bottom two on this chart. Requested to drive themselves or just.
Yeah, that's Sarah said.
Okay.
That she would want to drive.
Okay.
So that's.
Appreciate you putting on the naughty trends, but that is a large. Amount.
Oh, and that's the other thing is. I'm using the wage calculator from last year, Cheryl said they would have the newest one, but it should be very close. So not the way trap, but like the whole spreadsheet itself, some of the. Like the FICA and the unemployment, but that it should be within, she said I had to make sure to tell you. That that's not necessarily, so it should be very close, but.
And we'll look at these papers and talk next month.
Hopefully, yeah, that's true. Yes, thank you.
So when you're here, you're gone. For working at the school?
Um it depends on when. The baby was born um.
So you're gonna take full vacation on that then?
Um well, no, it's only half days, it's from basically nine until noon, but I will take vacation time for the hours that I'm not working. I had so many vacation hours. At the end of, well, at the end of the calendar year, that I had to use thirty. Hours before next thirty first, that I lose, that's why I tried to be more proactive in using it. Throughout the year so that it doesn't come down to the end in trying to.
So the band only works from nine to noon?
Um so I would be covering the junior high and high school portion, so he's at that building in the morning. And then he's at the elementary school for elementary band and young music in the afternoon and they're not doing that portion. I'm doing part of it.
Okay, you don't want work problems with kids.
Well, I couldn't say that, no, not at, but um no, because I still have a job that I need to deal, so. She's due the thirteenth, if she makes it to her full due date, I believe it's like six school days, like the last day of school is a half day. The day before that, track and field, I mean.
Thank you for for telling that.
Yep.
Yes. Yes, we would talk, yeah. Oh, I know this is ahead, but May twenty first, did we move that up?
Well, that's to the side.
Yes, okay, because that's school, schools out.
Okay, yeah, and to make sure we have enough time. Um because if you don't agree on the budget at the main meeting, then we need to, you'll have to meet again. So if we do that like earlier. Then that gives more opportunity to let us go by our numbers. More flexibility, I guess. I know that foundation is the next item, but do you wanna just look at those other two scheduling first?
Mm-hmm, so moving on to Dan Clark, local government center, continuing education.
Yes, I asked. Mostly I wanted to have discussion about continuing education um. Looking ahead to the next year. I watched a continuing education, Emily was also on that. Woman, um it was a panel discussion, but mostly looking ahead of what boards could. It's called a needs assessment for Black better. I'm not clarifying this very well, but it's a needs assessment for what the board would look at for continuing education. Um and it's making a plan for next year. So I did reach out to Dan Clark, um he's a Montana State University Extension Agent and he works with the local government center too. They they provided this before. Um I've also talked to Janelle Barber to just kind of touch base with them and see if that's something we could do and offer. And not necessarily the library do, but we can figure that out eventually if it's something of interest. But I think it would be a very good training. For us as a board.
It's something we can all get to the public.
That's what I was trying to, when I reached out to Janelle, I think um. We discussed that once before, but it had got dropped, so I just thought I'd reach out to her again. But I also see that we have budget training with Tracy, which could be another option, but that could go on to that needs assessment too.
Yeah.
Does he possibly?
That's the thing with Dan Clark and Ashley Kent is they're. Rather expensive, so we would have to. Maybe think about that.
Would he be an all day or?
So he has variety, he has an hour. Two, three to four um. And the price range varies as well, it could be in person or it could be versus on Zoom as well, so. That that's something we could think about and talk about, I just wanted to bring that up that we're looking at and maybe. That everybody could get an idea of what they think would be beneficial for. Continuing education and what you see our board could do better. Obviously, budget training would be a great example, we can also, instead of doing the big ones, do like fifteen to thirty. There is a, I wanted to say that there is an hour long one. On the Montana State Library YouTube page. That is Dan Clark and Ashley Kent and it's a conversation with Tracy Cook. And it's excellent and it has some really good points that I think would benefit all of us.
Is it on now?
If it's already up, it's been on since December. But I thought I better get the, well, we're waiting again with her continuing education, so we don't forget that and then. It was a good idea to have a needs assessment so that we know what we're all looking for for continuing education, so.
The last time Janelle brought this in, a couple of years ago, Danny and would you come to part of it? Danny and Nancy came. Um Janelle was able to like block book with a different community to get part of this note, so if we. Fight out soon enough because that takes off some travel costs.
Yes.
Um I think that one was a three hour training and it. We did cover maybe half of what they had to cover.
Yeah.
So I would like, I think the one hour is a must, so you get an idea of what the whole thing is. But to probably not schedule anything, that would be less than.
I a hundred percent agree, but I wanted to put that before us to know that because it is a cost and. Um Janelle hasn't gotten back to me again since she talked to them, she was gonna talk to them last week. But just to have it in our brains that.
And then it can be open to other.
Exactly.
Is this?
Janelle was all for that as well.
Excuse me, is this Zoom? Or is this in person?
It can't, it it can be, um it would, if it was in person, it would have to be later in the year because they book out. Really fast there um.
But I think the in-person aspect was, we probably have twenty five at that last one.
Yeah.
So there was potential for cost sharing that way also.
And it wasn't for them.
It wasn't for them. So Golden Age Center Board came, there were members, like Alliance Person came, there were some different churches members that came.
And just uh speaking of cost sharing, would this come out of our three fifty professional services budget?
Um we need to budget for that, which may not be possible right now, or that could be an example of something to ask the foundation for.
Okay.
Yeah, right, and we do have that other training, I didn't mean to leave that out, so that would. That would be a lot of training for next year, but I think all necessary and helpful.
Yes, I agree.
So we're not planning it. Soon or waiting?
Or discussing it?
It was just a discussion to have that as an option, I think in May and June. There's an outline on our, on Montana State Library about making and adopting. A needs assessment in May or June, so. I wanted to bring it up so that maybe in May and June we could finalize a continuing head.
Okay, so so we are on their schedule. Kind of sense.
Kind of, and then we'll have, I mean, every year directly we'll have a new.
Needs.
Trustee, well, new needs assessment, a lot of new trustees coming on in July. That could, wouldn't be bad to get them used to the continuing education and address some areas.
Any other discussion? Well, then budget training with Tracy.
So that would be a Zoom option, that would be free and she would give sixty to ninety minutes depending on what.
Did she have a timeframe that she was willing to do that with us?
So that, this is one of the things, because this is one of the deferrals um. From. The library standards.
Yeah.
Um so she said. So, so these are the dates she would like to avoid, to not, to not do. So make first. So May first through the ninth, she does not want to do. May fourteen, sixteen, twenty, or thirty. And that was on April ninth that she sent those out. Again, that would be a Zoom meeting, so it would hopefully be easier. If you wanted to maybe email me and let me know either you're not, you're very much unavailable dates or your preferred dates. And we can hopefully get something that would work.
Um, are you hoping to get it accomplished?
By June thirtieth.
By June thirtieth?
Perfect, okay. Yeah. Thank you. She will be at Pathfinder on May first. Here it goes.
Okay.
So. Maybe if we try to have dates for her and then, just like I just could have it printed out and I can get it to her and she can.
That's basically for on May.
So that would be like what we did with twenty.
And just sixty to ninety minutes, it's not a, it's not a half day or anything.
And so before, or budget would be better.
Yeah, that's true, or having to put it in.
Yeah.
Yeah. So there would hopefully be some time after then, the night before the thirty.
Yeah.
And we don't even, you don't even ask trustees have to approve the budget at the main meeting again, major, you know, so.
Right, any, um. Is there public comment items not on?
Still have added um public information.
You got it?
Yeah, so I would like the policy, I would like to propose that the policy committee writes a public information request policy. Um, I asked Emily in regards to this, if we have one uh that I just wasn't seeing, um, we talked to Lana Flocks and she told me. And is this, am I saying this correctly, that my mother said the county does not have one and we refer to the state?
Yes.
Um, when I watched that continuing ed from Ashley Kent, I think I'm saying that right, Ashley Kent, who was with. Montana State University, she also said that a policy in this regards is wise to have. Um, and Steve Gannon, I spoke with him on April second, and he said that would also be a wise thing for how to fit us in place. Um, and the reason for that is is just to define um the process of records request and how that will be handled for our public. Um, it's not to discourage it, it's to encourage it and to have it in mind, we have it correctly done. To um outline the cost and then just so it's overall beneficial for us as a library. Um, and the community to understand the exact process that's going and how it's going to be handled.
Okay.
Um, I did look up some options. Once again, this follows Montana code annotated. It's actually in Montana code annotated as well. Um, it's section. Three E. And it says. This is still that two dash six dash zero zero six. That established a public information request process describing the steps for submitting a request in the process. The agency will follow when responding to a request for public information, which must be published on a website. So since we don't have that, I just, I would like the policy committee to consider that. I also looked onto Montana State Library and they actually have a good example of one. I didn't print enough for all of us, but I did print it if you wanna look over it, but this is for the public committee to consider. And then this is on. On Montana.
But would you?
I, that's the next one.
Okay.
That was what I had looking. There's any discussion?
I don't think sure how, where it would be going to be put.
Well, I think that would be the part policies.
I was looking at it and I looked over it.
Oh, I see.
This is, see, that is. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, and then I requested um discussion of an executive session. At this point, I've had a staff member reach out directly to me by email. It's think five times. I was trying to look up on my phone, but at least four times I've received direct email from a staff member. Discussing her relationship with other staff. I think it's time for us to bring our end and have a face-to-face talk with her.
Okay.
And.
But I just wanted to see if everyone was okay with that. We can put it on the next agenda.
The next meeting?
Yeah.
Does that go at the beginning or the end? Or how do we do that?
I think usually it's at the end.
Talk about moving the next meeting or we go straight to foundation?
Would you say that again?
Were we talking about moving the next meeting or we?
No, you know that, that.
The staff members.
Staff meeting.
Oh, uh, have it so executive session means that we can send everyone away and talk privately, which we usually do for discussing personal matters with staff. Like I said, I think you guys have also been on some of the emails I've received, but to me as supervisors. It's time to have a dialogue with the staff member contacting us.
Okay. And you want that next meeting?
If that's acceptable.
Yeah.
I think, I think, I think I've been getting emails for the last three or four months, so it's time. I don't want the staff member to think we're ignoring her, not her person.
Staff person, did you do it all? It's just one person?
We could, uh, I'm talking about just one member. I don't need the emails from one staff member.
Right.
Okay.
Then, um. Next meeting, Emily and I talk because twenty first, the school is out.
But Emily's gone.
It'll be out the twenty third.
Right, yeah. So we talk, I think Emily's gonna be gone since it's budget related.
Twenty first is a week earlier, right? And it's fine for the budget?
I think it's fine for me. I have to be at a school assembly about two, but that would still give us two hours of a meeting, which. We managed to do it before.
Or if you wanna change today, I mean, if you think, if you're having a.
I think Emily has the same conflict, but we should be able to get everything done in two hours. And maybe wanna move the executive session to the June meeting.
Or you could move it up to very beginning.
That's true. So we're discussing.
Even make it earlier on the twenty first January.
Since there's a sixth grade assembly.
It starts at two thirty?
Yeah.
Um, I would be unavailable before noon, I'm assuming that the baby will be born before the twenty first, so the back class gets over at noon.
Okay.
I mean, I can be ready for the meeting. I can be there for the meeting. Um, I just couldn't start any earlier than that.
Okay.
They need to go back to school at two thirty.
That's sixth grade graduation final assembly, but I think it shouldn't, I mean, two and a half hours is quite a hefty.
We're discussing like as long as the budget goes smoothly, if the executive.
I'm hoping with what I presented that, um, I mean, the couple that are blank should be fairly easy to fill in and take care of.
Okay.
Public comment items not on the agenda, but I remember jurisdiction of board.
Are we doing the foundation?
Are we doing foundation? Do they just?
Okay, do we, do we adjourn?
I do have a couple of public comments.
Okay.
Okay, and that is the last uh time or two. I've discussed having some sort of a board uh in staff training event with Montana Non-for-Profit Association. And we're gonna discuss that in the foundation meeting coming up and fund for that. Um, so I just want to make uh sure that I have your. Uh, approval for that, and what I would suggest is if that's something you want us to go ahead and plan for. That Nona is chair of the trustees, myself is chair of the foundation, Emily is director. And we'd sit down for a conference call, the director of Montana Non-for-Profit, who's my son, and then. And give him input there for it and set a date for it. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we voted to be after when the trustee comes in, so that's in July.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, yeah, thank you. Uh, so we're good to proceed with that then?
I would just say that, um, if it's harvest.
I hear ya.
Yeah, so we have to work around that.
Yes, we have to work around.
I guess there's only.
Proprove it already, though.
Yes, yes.
All right, thank you.
They agree?
We do have a couple of public comments on here too.
Okay, you have some comment?
Yeah, on, on our Zoom we do. Sissy asked, please have the trustee verify if they can charge for things that are in their personal emails. And they are volunteers, which means they are not getting paid for any lost labor. The cost is to pay to replace the labor in time. And then she.
With that meaning policy, right?
Sissy also said also they need to include the FOIA Act and the Montana Constitution law with the MCA code. And then she congratulated you on your presentation, Justin, of your stuff.
Can you tell, um, when the comment came in, which we're supposed to add the?
She sent the first one at one eighteen, and so it came in shortly after that. No, it's just a comment on the Zoom.
Could you write that down?
It should be saved in the Zoom, doesn't it, Emily? Yeah, it'll be saved in the recording of the Zoom.
I just wonder if she thinks that should be added to our request for a public comment.
Yeah, that's what I wasn't sure on, but I'm sure she.
That or it's a amendment.
Okay, do you need anything else? That it?
That's all I have on Zoom.
Okay, um, any public comment, well.
We're gonna have a break and then do the foundation.
Yeah, did we?
Okay, do you just wanna get some public comment now on the trust?
Public comment now for the trustees, any other public comments not on the agenda. Okay, am I adjourned this meeting and then go to that or? Or we're all one meeting?
Um, I think it would probably be, again, in abundance of caution to have. The partners, the trustees and the foundation together for that to be like part of that meeting. And recorded and then when the trustees are, when that, yeah, it was on the.
Yeah, I don't think we can meet all without notice, and if we close this meeting and that's me.
Yeah.
Then we turn it over to them, right? A re-adjourn? All right. I'm still leaving? Okay.
Yeah, could we take a five minute break?
Sure.
I would like to follow a minute break.
We will continue with this meeting and we'll start foundations captain through the committee report. Whoever has them. If they don't have anything else, okay, we'll be on to the memorandum of understanding.
Okay, and so Emily just gave me all these examples that are believed about Tracy Cook. That we can consider, but I think just um clarifying the lines between whose job is what could be a wonderful thing for both of our boards.
They would do, would either Emily or uh Justin, do you mind just discussing briefly what the purpose of an M O U? Is it like, is it a legal document that very legally separates who has what power?
It is a legal document. I also, I spoke with Steve again on that April second. It was a phone conversation again. Um, it is, it will be a legal document, but we have to set the parameters for it and then he can write it up for us.
Okay.
So, because that's.
It can be binding or non-binding, either way.
Yeah.
Okay, because it seems like very few of our policies are.
Think more. That is, it's just to clarify, so we all are on the same page and understand um how things should be moved through.
Okay.
Let me uh kick it off maybe by saying thank you. I did read, you know, what you got from the Montana Library Association.
From Montana State Library.
Yeah, and and it was helpful. Uh, I did. I'll just say this, I do not consider it a conflict of interest to have the two of you trustees on the foundation as well. I I could see how you know, on paper, that might look like a conflict of interest. I don't regard it as that. I think it's actually more helpful in terms of lines of communication and making sure that we move together uh you in a in unity. So, I don't know how anybody else felt about that, but I don't think that we need to in in this process of coming up with the like a new document that we uh that we make your role in their non-voting. So, that's my two cents worth. I don't see it as a problem.
I think we've still had the input of both of you and if it was a healthy board that would be listened to, because I think for our current board, we have our our current foundation, it's it's the two of you who are trustees plus Emily, who's a non-voting member, and then the three of us are not trustees or not on the board. And when we have our working meetings, we're very much listening to what you guys are contributing in our decision-making.
And if we don't like it, we can overrule you because there's three of us.
Yeah, but the thing is, like Jane, I I think that would take away that.
Yeah.
Anybody saying that it was a conflict of interest. So, in that regard, I thought, well, that could make sense. I think we'd need, and the trustees choose really who goes on to the foundation, right?
Yes, they do.
And so, you have that covered too.
But she does feel it's a conflict of interest to have them being on voting because they are shown in a dual role.
I guess my only concern is if it's if it's illegal to the point that it could give us trouble later, like when it validates past votes. Um, Emily, do you have any input on that? On if having the two of us is actually like a legal issue or?
That was the first I heard of it. Um, Tracy mentioned it at M L A.
Okay.
And kind of in passing and then Justin reached out and so all I have is what has come across in the email.
So probably not, if it hasn't been, because you think it's other boards have to do this. Have a foundation and a trustee board to overlap.
Um, not necessarily. Um, it could be just two totally separate.
Boards.
Boards.
Okay.
I I appreciate that we have like the liaison between us with us on it. I don't think that's a problem. She also said that maybe the library, it may need to change or increase the size of the board in our um foundation bylaws and that might overrule that problem, when it sounds like to me, how I understood that, but I might be understanding that incorrectly.
I think it might be wise to i- in in bylaws to say that the the uh non-board, there has to be a majority of non-board members on the trustees. You know, so that there is a majority like we have currently.
Yeah.
Uh, but I I definitely don't see it as a problem. And we work well together and I I think that actually uh if they're looking for kind of checks and balances, which is kind of how that goes. I think we have plenty of checks and balances already built into this with a three-person non-trustee majority on the foundation board, but to me, it really helps with the lines of communication from trustees to foundation that the two of you were are on there.
Yeah, that's important to have them on, but it would even be better for you if you had the the two additional members so that right now you have, you don't really have a forum if they're not voting. You could have it two of one or you could have two of them. So this gives you the opportunity.
I suppose, yeah.
Voices and then they are still every single the board, which of course, like she says, it's um, yeah, it's it has to go back to Montana community twenty-two dash one three oh nine, which is what I've always.
But that, there's nothing there i- it it that says it's a conflict of interest, is there?
No.
She said she thought it was, but I can disagree.
You can disagree.
Yeah, okay.
You can disagree, but I do think that that it works better if you have. Yeah. So, and it and it was very you you may come into things like the result of the assembly library. The whole entire board and the foundation worked together at every meeting.
Okay.
So, and so that's what they had to do for that entire time. That's how I ended up. Alan Bolt.
Oh, I'm sorry, I guess.
I wonder if it might be prudent to consider seeking somebody to serve on the foundation who had, who's a contractor or who has some understanding of um moving some of these projects along when we look forward. I mean, it's not that nobody else could be on the foundation. Certainly, I don't have that background. We all have different things, but just if we were looking ahead and um knowing what was coming down the pipeline, that might be helpful. Moving forward so that it doesn't take so much of the time of um the board of trustees and the foundation together for so long.
Because you only have three representatives, really, really, you know, we actually have many but two other people come on to the foundation to help with building one of these.
So, other than the overlapping personnel, what else are we looking for in the M O U?
Late overlap would have to come out of our bylaws.
The foundation.
Yeah, the foundation bylaws. Thank you for clarifying that. And the M O U would just clarify who handles what with projects.
Okay.
And then the first line of line is the M C A twenty-two dash one three oh nine where the reference to the power and the duty of the board lies within any of what you want to do in that will affect the library buildings or operation or care of the library. That's, that is actually a law.
So, my understanding of that, after asking some questions, is that the trustees do um approve a project and then the foundation will give out fundraising or seeking funds and implementing the project. So, it's not, the trustees don't necessarily have um, so if they say um, well, so one thing I want to talk about today is security cameras. We had it last week, so I'm gonna talk about that. So, if the staff were to bring that concern to the trustees and the trustees look at that and then it would not be financially feasible for the, to come out of the general account budget. The trustees then go to the foundation and say, we have this project, we would like to, would you be willing to fundraise for it? Like, they approve it, they approve the purchase of new security cameras, then the foundation gets that project, then the foundation makes the decisions about like what that looks like. And then the trustees then accept that as a gift from the foundation. So, it's not, okay, you guys spend the money and then you come back and say, well, we want these cameras, then the trustees don't go, I don't really like the color of those cameras.
No.
So, we're not gonna.
So, so um should language talk about, because I understand with any of these buildings, there's what do you call this, basically the the structure of the building, like as I understand, it's a counting thing. Carpet is a capital, or carpet is not a capital improvement. But modeling roofing is, so is that one of the things we're really.
As it says, or the operation and the care of the library. So, that goes still.
But I think she's talking like what we can use that depreciation money for. We can't use depreciation money for carpeting, but we could use it for a boiler. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, yeah, that's what she's talking about. Not who has decides, but where that money would come from.
So, almost as a flow chart, if it's a capital improvement, we try to, we use our existing county funds. We approve. We approach the foundation.
And as far as authority and responsibility for things, uh I I got a lot of clarity over the last months, maybe six, eight months, but working with Emily as part of the long-range planning process, that all we were doing was collecting information. We weren't making any decisions. We were just collecting information, took a tour of the building, looked at this, looked at that. And then it really comes to the, uh, you know, gets fine-tuned into a proposal that the trustees deal with. It's not the foundation. So, for example, uh, there was a while back where I guess there was some discussion by emails passed around the foundation about uh flooring in that uh room, basement room, and uh and then I piped up and said, that's we've already made, had whatever input we're gonna have as foundation members in in with as far as the money goes, but everything else is a matter for the trustees, so it's not our business. To chime in anymore. So, you know, I think, go ahead. I I think I'm clear about how that works and I hope I'm not wrong.
I um did not like being chairman because people called and said, we got this pile of wood, we need to get it right now. And um we did not have a forum, we didn't vote for it and the pile of woods, or or when he came to put it in, uh, there were no, we didn't have a meeting, but in that, so I I that's what I want certification, because I don't want to be put in a position like, okay, you can do it, but um.
So, that's the purpose of today's.
I'm not a forum. Yeah, and I did not appreciate having to make decisions without a forum. Say, yes, put, have the guy come to put in the wood because he's there. That was not fun.
No.
And I don't want to do that.
And that's also against our rules for having an open meeting.
Yeah.
What do we do then in the event that the church foundation meets uh quarterly, but the trustees meet monthly, you know? That's kind of the time issue kind of entered in right there.
Why we have Zoom.
Yeah.
Okay.
And if you had your list, say, two, you 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 got a list, you know, you're gonna price the price, replace the lights, replace whatever, if you had this list, and then when this came time to do that, if we could be meet and I mean, or I I don't, I don't know. Yeah.
I don't know. That's the point of a capital improvement plan, just to have that. That's the list set by the trustees to have. These are the projects that we would like to see done.
Okay.
Okay, then then it flows to the foundation. So, we have approved all this stuff already then?
Yeah.
Okay, so when do we want to have this discussion today first to talk about that? So, I would think at this point, the M O U needs to be approved before the capital improvement plan happens, right?
Thank you, thank you.
And here's where I get stuck. We have the capital improvement plan, but can we just approve an entire plan when we don't know what that's gonna look like long term? Like, I would think a project comes before us from that capital improvement, you approve that and then ask the foundation for it.
I just don't understand the need for that extra step, because if you've already approved it as part of the capital improvement plan. I tried asking Tracy and.
That's where I'm confused.
And that's where I am confused too. I just, I guess there's not any reason to do a capital improvement plan if you're gonna bring each project through again.
I think it's true, because you, at the time, you're called improvement. I mean, it has to be fine too. So, let's say the security cameras, they're they're gonna hook on the outside of the building. That the building belongs to the trustees. To the family. So, that's, that's why.
So, that's not part of the capital improvement plan. That's just something I want to talk.
But I'm just using that as a reference.
I know, but I'm talking specifically about if the board approves a capital improvement plan. Like, if if the lighting is under there and suddenly we find out from Northwest Energy that or somebody becomes like, you've sent me a grant, not for that, but um saying, Joe, send me a grant for, I think Justin's has a use of. Um, so if somebody becomes aware of a grant that is for um like a rebate for new lights or energy saving or something, and somebody gets a hold of that and goes, oh, well, this is on the capital improvement plan and we're going to do this. And it's, that it's already approved. I but if it's something new or outside of that.
But it sounds like the capital improvement plan authorizes us to pursue it.
But I think. That's my understanding. I I'm not saying I'm right, I just.
Right. So, I think we could put something in the memorandum, memorandum of understanding, that it's it's sequential. Foundation is authorized to fund the highest and the second highest priority on the capital improvement plan. We can have every meeting. As board trustees touch base on where are we on this, decide if we want to move a larger project forward or back.
What would it mean if it was necessary?
Yeah, yeah.
Because of the loss of the library board should have exclusive control of what is recommended and play a role in the capital improvements.
Well, I guess my.
Setting the capital improvement plan is deciding that is.
Well, I guess my entire interpretation of this is we get a capital improvement plan so we can move faster. We do that.
Nothing in.
So, we can get things done without.
Nothing in a ward is supposed to be done quickly. I mean, we're government, we're government agency and everything has to be done before the public, so it does have to take time.
Well, I think she means faster than quarterly.
Right.
Now, you see it rightly, but I think, you know, it's a school of the whatever race.
Right.
And same thing, if they have a leak in the roof, that's. And same thing, if they have a leak in the roof, that's a time one, you know, and maybe we need to consider that when we do. Like rewrite the capital improvement plan and have like all functioning, you know. Buildings, so that's always in there. At that point, the foundation knows it is always authorized that if, you know, a window breaks. We are absolutely authorized to replace it immediately. We don't have to wait for the next trustee meeting. So maybe that's part of the MOU.
Is that why we get this, or why we get the emails about the boiler?
And so that was why that meeting happened special and and whereas.
But that was county money, that wasn't.
Yeah, but it still had to come through.
The true, cause it was county money.
And I see the difference regarding the flooring is that wasn't, while we really wanted to get that done quickly. I think all of us said, oh, it looks good, but we don't know if we have the authority on that. And so a better deal could have come along, perhaps. Um we didn't have to go with that particular one, but I think what felt funny to. Those of us who are checking with people to see if there are products and resources available for us is. Oh, he's gone to the effort to show us this, but this is what it looks like to get a grant that we might be saving money, but. Perhaps we're not able to follow the.
The county has to need you to have three bids, okay, for anything. But we've had to do that differently because we don't always get bids. For instance, when we built the Big Sandy Library, there was nobody that wanted to. To send their people from Great Falls or Havre to Big Sandy, we had to work a long time. And then when it came in for the funds, Big Sandy did donate over fifty thousand. Over six hundred and sixty thousand dollar building. But all that went into the foundation, which in turn met every month with the board. Every month, because all of a sudden, we have a bid for the rugs, they were so expensive. Well, we wanted the square tiles and the bid was too high. We went for the full carpet, we had to replace it now. So tiles would have worked better.
So the trustees did have a voice in that vote.
And and I think I disagree or misunderstand you, Jan. I think. Or trustees has to have three bids. I don't think the foundation has to have three bids. I think that is almost one of the reasons.
Private, so.
So we're not bound by those rules.
Right, unless it's, yeah, but we just knew need to know.
Which is why there's a capital improvement plan.
Okay, so back to the memorandum of understanding. We need to provide a kind of our overall reason and then Dan will work up a document for us.
I think what he wants is that we spell it out pretty much like this, and then he can work it up for us if that is what we have.
Okay.
Emily, did you say you had one we're working on or just?
I ended up not, it was just those. Cause I wasn't sure what. It's, you know, like many people wanted this discussion to happen before many people. Board of trustees sets like a local plan, they have all the decisions.
Yeah, it was the reason two of us that did it, it wasn't any foundation number. Yeah.
But um I know we have five thousand dollars still in the foundation to put windows in. And I did notice, looking at the financial, how expensive it was. And those are original windows, they have all the waves and everything in them.
So so the last time I tried to get bids for the windows. Um I went through two out of Great Falls. And the one said that it is a basic, at that point, this is the last time, it was maybe years ago, it's an impossible project to do. There was, there's no one that will come and do it. Cause he's so, he was so far, he whoever it was that sent it back, um. So he would have, it would have to be a subcontractor project, and at that point, everyone just booked out over three years, and so.
I think yeah, part of that is because of the pressures, because so much of that same money could go towards that. Cause we actually had someone come speak to us and.
I was in here during COVID, so I didn't.
God bless you.
Um I also have six years worth of um we can sit down together, Jan, and look at what the. The last six years. Yeah, but I'm talking.
Yeah, like if it's a big enough project, then you do. It seems to be a similar one, like, like very specific to a large project.
Is that in our packet statement?
Not in. I think last, I mean, I guess we haven't adopted it yet. That was one of my concerns, um redoing the. Bathroom downstairs, things like that.
So we would, so so you have the bathroom, I said, if you're gonna put in. New thing, flooring or whatever, I I looked at, you know, so. You guys tell us that you really do this and when money is available.
Oh, you say that you want it done and then you give it, but then when the foundation's deciding, they don't have to come back to the board and say, we want this sink. Or we want this flooring, or we want this paint color. They make those decisions because it's foundation money. So you are asking basically for a foundation for a gift. And then so it's up to you, I mean, if you don't want it from the foundation, then that's. The trustees decision.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
So.
Because I came forward. I had, she wasn't anyone for the foundation, she was far as the manager. And the, the thing was she wanted it, and you said, I decided, and I said, yeah, you do. And then we come to the foundation, we look at it. So that's what did happen last year, this last year. They thought it was soon. Yeah, we did.
So Jesslyn found three examples.
Two of them.
Tracy Cook sent two, thank you for bringing them, but two of them look like they're very specifically for large projects.
Yes.
Once again, I I'm confused. Do we have a memorandum of understanding for each project or do we just?
No, it should just be an overall memory.
That's what I understand, thank you.
Those are just. Yeah, these are just from.
Janet, what'd you do for the Big Sandy build? Cause that seems large enough, it might have required a memorandum of understanding.
We actually worked all together, wherever we separated, but every month they take, every month we'll go together. But even the architect was there.
So since we don't have any projects currently on our books that are this big. Do we need a full on MOU, do you think, or do we just need to amend individual policies?
Yeah, you mean bylaws?
No, I think we have bylaws, I don't know.
The foundation bylaws.
So maybe the foundation just needs to look at our bylaws and then present it to the board and we can amend it to basically say. And we do dollar limits, or just say we will not proceed with the project unless directed to by the board of trustees.
We have a dollar. The foundation. Well, for the, for them to use, because we had a problem before with Sandra, where she was bringing one.
With some chicks, with foundation money?
No, with the trustee.
But we're talking about foundation money.
Oh, foundation money, no. I'm not, I'm sorry.
Do you have a copy of the foundation bylaws?
And that, the trustee members.
But it doesn't sound like we're really ready to produce anything.
No, I think it, today was just supposed to be a discussion.
Okay.
I brought these as examples, we can make copies to send out. And kind of handed me on with, so I think, and I I tried to say that when you brought it on. But the pilots vary, the foundation bylaws very much need to be looked at. Changing the amount, legally, I'm not sure, we need to find out legally how that, what that looks like, is if that's a thing. From, because the bylaws right now say that you have to have at least two if. And not more than three, which is what we did for the Geraldine project, where there were three trustees on the foundation, so. We have now found out that that is violated, right? So we need to do some more research to make sure that. What we have is legal. If it's changed to keep that legal, so.
I guess I'm still confused about. What happens between the two, so like with the carpet.
I agree.
What we did was wrong, is is that, you know? But why? So like, do we, like, it's just, I'm just, I don't know, I'm confused, because everything shouldn't, are we just getting micro, like managed by everything, like every decision?
Yes, or should we not be saying? We need to get all of this stuff done and that needs to come from the board. Is it the board that needs to say? These are the things we need you to work on, would you please find these things? And then we go that route and we don't have. Many meetings trying to. Make the board do things that we don't want them to do. Like, I think, I think it looks like. Trustees say we need extra money sometime. Here, we we need money for the Santa Claus and Santa Claus says, yes, right, you make it happen.
Yes, exactly.
But then when we made it happen with the real flooring, then that was wrong.
But that was because we hadn't approved the.
But I think we had discussed.
We discussed it, but we haven't actually voted on it.
Wasn't in a public meeting either.
Okay.
So but if you had a list of projects, you know, say like a capital improvement plan.
Yeah, which actually we approved first.
Then do we have to vote again?
Yeah, I think we were mixed up on it. Yes, we were not trying to be no effective, but, yeah. So we will.
It's just confusing.
Wait for people to ask for bids and then we'll do it.
Yeah, I do have one more question, and do we approve the entire capital improvement plan exactly as it's presented? Or do you approve each? And that's where I know you said there's the steps that we should probably just avoid, do.
That was my first moment, but trying to process it in my brain, I don't understand why we don't spend the time. And effort on creating a a whole capital improvement plan. And then approving it, if then we have to bring back each part of the plan for reapproval. That's the part that I don't.
Thinking of, thinking of our current draft, I think it would be useful to have like approved and future. Because like when we talked about adding roof over the end, like to prevent ice buildup, to me that makes sense in terms of future. Cause it needs a little bit more fleshing off, but. Um like the flooring, that could be an approved section, and it might be that we have to touch base on the capital improvement plan every other meeting. Because right now it only has Fort Benton, we're gonna have capital improvements here.
And just one, I I think that, you know, if a capital improvement plan is presented, it can be approved as amended. So I mean, the trustees have the ability to say, you know, we approve as presented, one and two, but number three. Here's how we would amend it. Anyway, so it it's not like just.
Yeah, and they come to say, we're gonna do this, we can say, oh, the capital proof plan, oh, is that done, correct?
When who comes to you? No, when who comes to you?
When you guys say, we're gonna do this project in library.
But it's no. But the projects, we're not coming up with projects, like we're just waiting for like basically, right? Like, we're not coming up with stuff, like, that's not our role, correct? We're not coming up with that. No, that's the capital instrument print that the the trustees set have, so it's like basically a checklist, and then if we. Have the.
If the opportunity to do it.
Right, right.
I think, yeah.
You can do the fundraising.
Right, yes.
Or if a grant comes up that is like specifically for windows and we go, hey, the library needs windows, then we can do that, right? Right, but we're not coming up with.
Because like you said, to find a contractor to find.
Yeah, or even just one more person.
Yeah, well, you need two for.
Yeah, I'm just saying, even somebody wouldn't have to be a contractor, but somebody that could help. Make these things happen would be helpful, would not have to be.
I feel like that did clarify Santa, sorry, process though that.
But just like, I think for me, I was confused, so going forward, like, that we wouldn't have to. Like bring it back to the trustees, like if we pick flooring.
And if it's already been.
And it's already been a sink, then we don't have to, you guys don't have to pick the colors, like we get to do all that, correct?
Cause they can't legally.
But then it's really up to the director to implement it, cause we've hired a director to do that. Yeah, but she's, she'll say Tuesday. That'd be a good date to install, that's that's the director's call. I mean, I I don't think the trustees nor the foundation want to get into that kind of micromanaging.
It's already been decided that they're gonna do whatever on Tuesday. Why does they go?
Well, I think it was.
It still comes back, you have to pull this library, or if you do anything different in the library.
That one, but then getting.
But most things wouldn't.
Those things wouldn't affect it, and I think the next action item for the board regarding this would be. Decide what capital improvement things you can just approve right now so we can move. And then the things that need more work, but maybe also prioritize those things that need more work, like.
And then you might have to add in something in the middle, like Big Sandy's having problems with the. With the snow and the water draining away from the library. So.
Yeah, get get a good contractor.
So we'll have to go with. And I know the library board did help broke on the colors only because the director. Actually wanted to be included in what was put in the library.
Which makes sense.
For what project?
Well, for Big Sandy.
Okay, so then not, not the director.
I'm the director, I'm I'm the chairman, you're the director.
No, 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 but you're talking about a specific project, I was not here during that project.
Right, right, but what happened was, she wanted the. The where the, where, you know, you come in and check out the books and all that, she wanted it specific way.
So that was, you're just talking about a different person.
Yes, I appreciate that part of that conversation, but can we bring it back to our client hand? I think we have an understanding more of what a memorandum of understanding would look like if we needed to make it, as well as the order that we should go through. With working with the board and foundation, does everyone feel that way, that we have more of a clarification and that has a purpose of this discussion in the first place?
Yes.
Okay, um in regards to a memorandum of understanding, was that something the board would like the foundation to move forward with?
Yes, because there is a.
I don't see it as being necessary until we have a more involved project.
We can bring the.
We need to work on it first. Yes, I'd say work on it, cause then it's in place.
But then we can also review the capital improvement, we can review that report again and make sure that it's ready to go before the board.
I know, yeah, the MOU was part of the capital improvement plan, all one documented. One's policy and one's procedure.
I think the sooner we get those approved things down, the more we, the more we can um. Do over the next three months, cause we won't meet again, right, until.
And do you have stuff cooking? No, that's why we were set. Okay, good, get busy. I did that, okay, good, get busy, will it?
On the board.
Yeah, it's the trustees.
Okay, all right, thank you though, cause.
Yeah, thank you for.
It was just not fun getting those calls and saying, the wood's here.
What wood are we talking about?
For the flooring, basement floor.
You know, what's about, the guy is here right now, gonna put it in, and it was very, it was hard, I had to make the decision, and it was. It's hard.
We agree that would be the way that we'll do it again, but I think that wasn't ideal to do it that way, I'm sorry, you were putting that.
No, no, that.
I just think, we understand kind of what we need to do, so, when.
And me too.
When you get our proof list, we'll just roll.
Okay. All right.
Can we change it very much, truly, you're thanking for everything that you do within the foundation, and how you help this move forward.
And now you can drink.
Oh.
Yeah.
This mean.
Oh. Public comment.
Public comment, please.
I, Anna Gonzalez from Fort Benton, and I'm just, I'm not clear on who the MOU is between. Is it between the found, the trust, boarded trustees and the foundation, or is it the boarded trustees, total county, and the foundation? So we have three entities or two?
Two.
Two.
Okay.
I think we pull in Gannon to make sure it was legal.
Any other public comment?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
So when the stuff came, you were just gonna store it? When the floor came?
The flooring was bought, the flooring was approved, and then all of a sudden he showed up, and was gonna put it in, I, tell me if I'm wrong. And then I got these calls, like, can we do this, and I didn't know what to do. It was, cause there was not board members to approve it, and we didn't have a Zoom meeting.
So you only approved, you only approved.
Point of order.
By.
Point of order, yes, please.
Public comment is not a time for discussion.
Oh, okay, I just wondered if you, uh, if you bought it, that you didn't.
I, I will comment on that, just because I was a part of that conversation, there was a conversation between Emily, Kim and I, that's a. Flooring could be stored at the lumber store until the project was approved and ready to go. That didn't happen, it just went from buying to putting in, that's.
So, I think part of the misunderstanding, though, that was probably my fault, was that it wasn't going to be stored in a, um, climate controlled. So it was so, so cold, he was concerned about that.
He didn't tell me that.
Right. I, and I just said that was, but I didn't find that out until he was there and said, I needed it to, we needed to go in, and since the installation was part of the original bid. I was working on the assumption that the entire bid was approved, not just a portion of the bid.
And my, and my error was that, I thought that since the library didn't have to be closed, we didn't have to weigh in on, as a board of trustees, that we only had to get. Hold in if we had to close the branch to install, since there is no closure, and now overtime, then I saw, thought that we didn't really need. To hold into a special Zoom to do the installation.
But now we can move forward.
Thank you, cause that makes it up there, that's, it was not fun.
Are they not kind all around?
No, yes, this is better, yeah, so, we have to get busy and make that thing, right? Okay, I, public, is there any more public comment, right? Okay, with no further public comment, we will adjourn, and our next meeting is May twenty first, which is a week, oh, wait, do we? Twenty first, two thousand twenty five, because of, or whatever, right?
The next week. That's where I was confused, right, but because it's a week early, because school is out today, that's why I was confused, because you guys said in the meeting, we can't have it on, I thought you were saying you couldn't have it on the twenty first, cause school is out, and I was saying, no, school isn't out. So it's a week earlier.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned until May twenty first, I mean, we'll do it again. Thank you, thank, and thank you for clearing up.